Warning. Town of Montgomery Annual Town Meeting 2023. The legal voters of the Town of Montgomery in the County of Franklin are hereby notified and warned to meet in the Town Hall in said town on Tuesday, the seventh day of March 23, 2023 A.D., at nine o'clock before noon to act in the following business to wit. Article 1, elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Morgan Daybell.
Any other nominations? No, no seconds needed. Are there nominations? Anywhere? If there are no other nominations, we can close the nominating process. All those in favor of closing the nominating process and electing Morgan Daybell as the next moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Are the ayes have it? Morgan? Welcome aboard. You said both sides, there's only one side. This might be handy. Congratulations.
Moderator, can we have a reluctant in this that Tim has stepped down at 25 to become the moderator?
You can. Article 2, elect the remaining town officers as required by law. 2A, select person to your term by ballot. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Emily Kimball.
Emily Kimball has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? You've nominated Emily Kimball for a select person for a two-year term. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nominations. This is a ballot vote, and so if there is no objection, I will direct the Select Board Chair to cast one ballot for Emily Kimball. Seeing no objection. And you've elected Emily Kimball as select person for a two-year term. Article 2B, select person for a three-year term by ballot. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Suzanne Dalwa.
Suzanne Dalwa has been nominated. Other nominations?
I nominate Arnold Mercy.
Arnold Mercy has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? You have nominated both Suzanne Dalwa and Arnold Mercy for a select person position for a three-year term. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nominations. This is by ballot. If either of the candidates are in the room and wish to speak, they can do so now.
Suzanne Dalwa is not in the room. She is aware.
Understood. Mr. Mercy?
Yes, I don't know how many people know me, but I'm a longtime resident of Montgomery and born and brought up here, farming for all my life, up to 2020. I got out of farming in 2020 and went into construction for 18 years and retired last April at full-time. So I would really protect the vote. It could be an asset to the board. Thank you.
As has been noted, Suzanne Dalwa is not presently here. This is a ballot vote. I'm going to look to the town clerk to see how she wants the lines divided as people come up. Okay, so when you're casting your ballot, come up through the middle, A through L on this side, M through Z on this side. To be pumped to order to hear the results of your vote. Select person for a three-year term by ballot, Suzanne Dalwa, 41, Arnold Mercy, 36, blank, 2. And you've elected Suzanne Dalwa. At this point, I want to ask the body if there is any objection to visitors who are not on the voter checklist to addressing the body. Seeing no objection, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow our state representative to address the body. Anyone like to make that motion? Second by Sharon. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
I'll use Penny also. First of all, you guys should be the men. Probably the biggest group I've heard of or seen, so congratulations, you guys. You know what the word "town meeting" really means, so good for you.
Again, I'm on the health care committee in Montpelier. Right now, it's been six, seven weeks, and there's just so much to talk about, but it's all talk. Right now, there's so many things going on, so many amendments to every bill, it's hard to keep track of. We passed three bills out of our health committee to do with being able to have providers join a compact with other states, and hopefully that eliminates a few of the job openings we have in doctors and nurses to cross state lines. So I think it's a good bill. It went through, and it will go on to another committee, but it looks good. We did have another bill, a suicide prevention bill. It went through our committee, and I'll be honest with folks, I voted no, but it went through seven to three, and that's gone to, I believe, appropriations because there's money involved. So other than that, the big bill you all hear about is S-4, the heat standard bill. It came out of the Senate. It's gone to the Senate Committee. They passed it the Friday night, and what that did is send it to the House. But there's a lot of different rumors about being a two-year study, but when it got to the House, it has to be as written. So even though the Senate, after they passed it out, said we want a two-year study, the House will either table it or vote on it or add amendments. So we're not sure what the heat bill will do or when. So there's rumor down there that it will be tabled for two years and see what the study is, so nobody seems to know right now. But if there's anything that concerns you or questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can if you have any. Yes?
I'm interested in the House 191 on trapping.
Okay, there's a bill down there to do away with all trapping unless it's for nuisance or protection of your property, and so there is traction on that. The Fish and Wildlife Board is against it because that's where they get a lot of their data from trackers and about the health of the species and if there's overpopulation or diseases, and that will take away that tool. So it is going to be coming out. I don't know just when, but that will be voted on.
And how do you feel about that?
No, I'm honest. I am honest, okay? So I think we need that tool. I don't trap. I never had. I don't care for it personally, but it's not my own personal decision. I think we need the tools. Without trapping, you're going to see more nuisance animals, you're going to see more coyotes, you're going to see more rabies, you're going to see more distemper. That's my feeling, and I've been a sportsman all my life, and I've seen that. So it's a necessary tool. That's my own personal opinion.
How about the use of dogs? That bill that's 323 that's up for using dogs?
Coyotes, same thing. I'm sure every one of you have your own opinion on you, and again, if you don't control the population somehow, things get overpopulated, and coyotes will be one of them. I don't know how many people up here has chickens or sheep or animals. If you don't regulate somehow, you know, pretty soon you're going to be in your backyards.
Well, is dogs really the right way to do that?
I don't, my question, it is, there's a lot of things in our lives and humanity.
Well, only we can change that.
And only we can change it, and I will go along with the vote. You know, that's one thing down there, you know, when the public votes, the majority rules. So again, you know, the biologists, they collect probably 75% of all their data from bear dog meat. How many bears get shot during the season? Very few. How many coyotes get shot during the season? Very few. With dogs chasing, and I don't care for it personally, I've never done it, won't, but it is, to me, it's a necessary tool to keep things in balance. I know. I was being honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Mary?
Yes, Mary.
While we're on the subject of data, and you're on the health care committee, one of my many disappointments the last few years concerning the way COVID was dealt with was the lack of taking advantage of the opportunity to gather data and also to present it. And I'm hoping that the legislature will put in place something that requires the Department of Health to get whatever data they can the next time something like this happens, and as they say, it's not if, it's when.
The only bill I know of down there is they wanted to extend the COVID regulations, but that doesn't help you, okay? So I guess if I was to give you a suggestion, write something up, give it to myself or somebody else, and have it addressed. Now, it would be probably too late this year because I think the crossover date is next week when we go back, but it's not too late to do something like that. Anybody else? If you have anything, you can get hold of any of us down there. You go on the website.
On the fuel bill that's coming up, you said there may be a moratorium for two years, but if there isn't, that's passed, people are forced with it. Are they looking at elderly people, people on fixed incomes? A lot of people burn fuel oil, they burn gas, other people. Next would be the wood fires, you know? This state cannot sustain full electric. It's not going to happen. We don't have the grid, and we don't get the sun in the wintertime up here either as far as, so I don't know what they're thinking down there, but they're not thinking about the entire population.
Well, I hope it is between the 150 House members that they can come up with a reasonable, smart bill. Right now, what we read is one, but what I've learned in six weeks, any bill that's presented, there's so many different amendments in and out, it's not the same bill after a few weeks that you saw in the beginning. So that's frustrating, okay? So, but who knows what that bill's going to look like? So it might not be as bad as we think. Hopefully it isn't, and we're not sure it's even going to go through. You know, the best thing you can do is get hold of all your legislators and senators. You can leave a message with your sergeant of arms for all the leaders down there and let them know your opinion. That's what we don't do. We don't hear from the people down there, so we don't hear from our people, so get involved. Yes?
Recently, I heard that the Fish and Wildlife are going to increase the numbers of moose taken. Is that correct?
I was talking to Chris here the other day. The reason they want to increase it is because we're losing our moose, now, according to them, okay? We're losing our moose population because of the ticks. Quite a few of the younger calves are dying and never seen in the first year because of that. So what they're trying to do, and what I guess makes sense, is to get the herd down to a very low level, and the tick situation would disappear or mostly disappear, and then they can start rebuilding the herd. So I'm not sure.
I'm a semi-Canadian guy, I'm a very much a scientist. That science holds weight if you're trying to sell hunting licenses or increase the moose take. However, there's resistant DNA to the tick diseases that are being carried, and when you wipe out the herd, you wipe out that resistant DNA. I would also mention that ecotourism brings more money into this state than the forestry industry and the ski industry combined, and we don't have the infrastructure or as much of infrastructure money spent on that crew coming in and leaving. I would suggest we need to decrease the take on the moose herd and let the resistant DNA exist, and the surviving moose will be stronger because of it. Their science is skewed to sell hunting licenses, not to defend the moose herd or protect us.
And again, you're probably right. I don't mind hearing you either way, but what I would suggest, you seem to know what you're talking about, there's a Fish and Game Board meeting on the 15th of this month, and I would let them know your feelings because that's the difference a lot of times, and that's one of my problems in Montpelier. I only hear one side most of the time.
Well, that's how it works. I'm glad to have been able to voice out this opinion in this place here today. That's what makes Vermont good.
Right. Anything else? All right, I'll leave you people to your business, and feel free to call me anytime, days, weekends, nights. I'm there for the right reasons. Might not always agree, will we? But we're there for the right reasons. Appreciate it, guys. Thanks.
And we are at Article 2C to elect a Lister for a three-year term by ballot. Are there any nominations? Genevieve Lowdal Guild is nominated. Are there any other nominations? This is for Lister for a three-year term by ballot. You've nominated Genevieve Lowdal Guild. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nominations, and this is a ballot vote, and so if there's no objection, I will direct the Select Board Chair to cast one ballot for Genevieve Lowdal Guild for a three-year term of Lister. And you have elected Genevieve Lowdal Guild for a three-year term for Lister. Article 2D to elect a Lister for the remainder of a three-year term expiring in 2024. Are there any nominations?
I nominate James Walsh.
James Walsh has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? You've nominated James Walsh for the Office of Lister for the remainder of a three-year term expiring in 2024. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nominations, and again, this is a ballot vote, so if there is no objection, I will direct the Select Board Chair to cast one ballot for James Walsh for Lister for the remaining three-year term expiring in 2024. And you have elected James Walsh as Lister for the remaining three-year term expiring in 2024. Article 2E, Office of Lister, remaining three-year term expiring in 2025 by ballot. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Sharon Euland.
Sharon Euland has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? I've nominated Sharon Euland for the Office of Lister for the remaining three-year term expiring in 2025. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nominations, and again, this is a ballot vote, and if there is no objection, I will direct the Select Board Chair to cast one ballot for Sharon Euland for Lister. And you have elected Sharon Euland as Lister. Article 2F, delinquent tax collector, three-year term. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Anita Woodburn.
Respectively defined and operational.
Looking for nominations for the Office of Delinquent Tax Collector for a three-year term. Are there any nominations?
Can someone give a brief, obvious description of the job of the delinquent tax collector so we can be informed?
Anita, would you like to take that? No?
They wanted to know what the job they do. The job is tense. We have to send out multi-matters. You have to send out your receipt, your payment receipts. You have to deal with mortgage holders, attorneys. Phone calls to him, right?
All for Brett, right?
All for Brett, right? Basically, I want to be away for quite more than two weeks at a time, so I can't really do that. I can tie you down.
Office of Delinquent Tax Collector for a three-year term. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Deanna Robtow.
Deanna Robtow has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Deanna Robtow has been nominated for the Office of Delinquent Tax Collector for a three-year term. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close nominations. This is not by ballot, so all in favor of Deanna Robtow as your delinquent tax collector for a three-year term, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Nick? And you've elected Deanna Robtow for your delinquent tax collector.
You got your own.
I just want to take one moment to thank Anita first. I don't know how many years you've put in that. Fifty-five? Oh, twenty-five? I mean, I, Anita went over the role and responsibilities of the position, but it's much more than that, and I got to be honest, it's a hard position to be in. You catch a lot of a word that I can't say up here because we're being recorded. So Anita, from everybody up here and hopefully everybody out there, thank you so much for the time and energy.
Article 2G, to elect a first constable for a two-year term. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Brent Godin.
Brent Godin has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? You've nominated Brent Godin for the Office of First Constable for a two-year term. Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nominations. This is a voice vote. All in favor of Brent Godin as your first constable, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe the ayes have it. You've elected Brent Godin as your first constable. Article 2H, Village Cemetery Commissioner, remainder four-year term expiring in 2024. Are there any nominations?
Robert?
Yes?
Sonny Lombros was very, very sick, and Lois, he begged, they couldn't come with him, but Lois ordered Sheila Marcia on the committee, so I would nominate Sheila Marcia for that position.
Sheila Marcia has been nominated. Sheila Marcia has been nominated for Village Cemetery Commissioner. Are there any other nominations?
What does she want?
Village Cemetery Commissioner, remainder of a four-year term. You've nominated Sheila Marcia. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close nominations. All in favor of Sheila Marcia as Village Cemetery Commissioner, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. You've elected Sheila Marcia. Article 2I, Center Cemetery Commissioner, a five-year term. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Linda Kluba.
Linda Kluba has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? You've nominated Linda Kluba for the position of Center Cemetery Commissioner for a five-year term. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I will close nominations and bring this to a vote for Center Cemetery Commissioner. All in favor of Linda Kluba, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And you've elected Linda Kluba as Center Cemetery Commissioner. Article 2J, Library Trustee, remainder of a three-year term expiring in 2025. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Christina Suarez Pratt.
Christina Suarez Pratt.
I nominate Jen Worth.
Jen Worth. You've nominated Christine Suarez Pratt and Jen Worth for the position of Library Trustee for the remainder three-year term expiring in 2025. Are there any other nominations? Two nominees for Library Trustee for a three-year term. If there are no other nominations, I will close the nominations. We can attempt to do this by voice first. It is not a ballot vote. So your two nominees are Christina Suarez Pratt and Jen Worth. First, do either candidate wish to address the body?
He's going to make me. There's two of these that are actually on here, but Christine Suarez Pratt, I'm a high school social studies teacher, half of her Suarez Pratt, I'm a high school social studies teacher, have been here 20 years, Norrins I support the First Amendment and very strongly believe that people have the right to choose what they would like to read. And I will work to expand the library as fiscally responsibly as possible.
Is Jen Worth here? Okay. So again, we'll attempt to do this by voice. Two candidates are Christina Suarez Pratt and Jen Worth. All those in favor of Christina Suarez Pratt, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Jen Worth, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe Christina Suarez Pratt has been elected. And Christina Suarez Pratt has been elected to Library Trustee for the remainder of a three-year term expiring in Article 2K, a Fire Commissioner for a two-year term. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Joe Zartarian.
Joe Zartarian has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for a two-year term Fire Commissioner? We've nominated Joe Zartarian as Fire Commissioner. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close nominations. All in favor of Joe Zartarian as your Fire Commissioner, please say aye.
Aye.
Joe Zartarian has been elected. Article 2L, Planning Commission, a three-year term position. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Joe Sherman.
Joe Sherman has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Nominated Joe Sherman for a three-year term for Planning Commission. Are there any other Seeing no other nominations, I'll close nominations and call the vote. All in favor of Joe Sherman as your on the Planning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
And you've elected Joe Sherman. Article 3, Shall the Voters Approve the Addition of One Trustee Seat to Increase the Board Membership of Library Trustees from Eight to Nine Members? Does anyone have a motion?
So who?
We're all just moved that the voters approved the addition of one trustee seat to increase the board membership of library trustees from eight to nine members. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Brent?
Why do we need, or why should we have another trustee?
Burt?
I'd like to address that person. Well, as per the library bylaws, we can have nine members on board. We currently have eight. Nine makes it an uneven number, which is better for voting, even though most of the time we're all unanimous. Also, the board needs people. We need people to help us with our fundraising, since all our expenses are paid through fundraising. It's not supported by town taxes, so we need all the support we can have. And that's why we decided to go up to the maximum of nine people.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, please have a microphone for people to speak.
Apologies.
Have a dance.
You got it, Tom.
Would anyone like to speak to this article, or are you ready for a vote?
Well, just common sense, Mr. Moderator. All committees and board general have a long number. So let's vote.
And if you are ready for the vote, the motion on the table is to approve the addition of one trustee seat to increase the board membership of library trustees from eight to nine members. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I believe the ayes have it, and the ayes do have it. And you have elected to increase the board library trustees from eight to nine members, which will take us to Article 3A, which is to elect a library trustee for a term of three years. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Jen Worth.
Jen Worth has been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Nicole Landerman.
You have put in nomination Jen Worth and Nicole Landerman for the library trustee term for three years. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Daniel Kahn.
Daniel Kahn has been nominated.
Kay, Kay Jen.
Yep. Do you have put in nomination Jen Worth, Nicole Landerman, and Daniel Kahn for library trustee for a term of three years. Are there any other nominations? Would any of the candidates like to address the body?
I can talk loud, it's okay. My name is Daniel Kahn. Moved to the area in 2019 with my wife. We took over the old Shady Acres. It's now Proctor's Green. I have two kids now, two and a half and one-year-old, and we've increasingly been spending more time at the library, taking advantage of the services there. And I figured it'd be nice to participate and lend a hand where needed. So happy to be on the board of trustees library.
Hi, my name's Nicole Landerman. I recently moved here last year, and I've been volunteering at the library ever since I got here. Really excited to see it grow, and I'm excited to hopefully be a part of it in the coming years to help expand programming. Thank you.
We have three candidates nominated, Jen Worth, Nicole Landerman, and Daniel Kahn. I would be happy to have seven people raise their hand to have this done by a show of hands rather than voice vote.
Don't move.
Okay, and so we will do this by a show of hands. Select Board, are you ready to count?
I guess not.
So by a show of hands, to elect a library trustee for a term of three years, first we Second, Nicole Landerman.
Up, up high.
Nicole.
For who? Is that Nicole?
The results of your votes for a three-year term for library trustee, Jen Worth, ten, Nicole Landerman, nineteen, Daniel Kahn, fifty, and you've elected Daniel Kahn. At this point, I want to take a moment and remind people that there will be ballot voting going on in the back of the room. Folks who are on the DCA who have a role there should report back there. For folks who are here for a town meeting, it would be great if you held off and did your ballot vote at the end of the meeting. Article 4, Shall the Voters Authorize the Treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA 4791 to collect current taxes? Is there a motion? There's a motion to authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA 4791 to collect current taxes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Motion on the floor to authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA 4791 to collect current taxes. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we can move this to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, and the ayes do have it. Article 5, Shall the Town Vote to Approve a Half-Cent Increase in the Tax Rate to Be Allotted to the Conservation Reserve Fund Established by the Voters in 2018 in accordance with 24 VSA 2804? Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allotted to the Conservation Reserve Fund Established by the Voters in 2018 in accordance with 24 VSA 2804. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sharon?
With the current grant list, how much does that raise?
With the current grant list, that raises about $800 annually. Currently, the fund has $1,600 in it. That does not include this current fiscal year's allocation.
Suzanne?
Mike, I feel that prices are going up everywhere, and even though it's only a half cent, everything's going up. I think people who want to support the conservation funds can do so real well. But I don't think it needs to be regarded as a tax.
Perry?
I'm a little confused about the word increase. Have you approved it in the past couple of years?
Yes.
Yes, this has been approved every year since 2018. And to clarify, it would be an increase on the tax rate that is from municipal budget, Article 6.
Was it a half, has it been a half?
It has been a half cent since it was established.
So it's really maintaining what?
Yes, it would be an increase to the municipal tax rate. It is not an increase in the amount.
So Chad, we could go to nine and a half cents. Can the Conservation Commission provide an explanation?
So you can speak to us while they're looking that up. Titus?
It would just be helpful if the proponents of this could provide an explanation.
I'd be happy to provide an explanation. So these funds are held in a reserve account to be used by the community at the direction of the Conservation Commission with the approval of the Select Board for expenditures related to land protection for the public good, thinking about things about public access, ecological function, environmental importance, for those reasons. Typically, towns that have these funds will hold them and support them for a number of years before using them. As we said, right now, there's about 1,600 bucks in there. That doesn't go all that far. The hope would be, though, that the funds would be used to leverage additional funds in the future. Examples of how these have been used are first communities who have done such work as town forests, or for example, the river access in Enesberg that was created a few years ago. The town used monies from the Conservation Reserve Fund to match public dollars in order to purchase that property. So that's the intent of these funds. And just for clarification, if passed, it would take the estimated projected tax rate, which is found on page 18, it would take that to .5828.
There's a motion on the floor to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allotted to the Conservation Reserve Fund. Established by the voters in 2018 in accordance with 24 VSA 2804. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If there is no other discussion, we can move this to a vote. Again, the article you're voting on is to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allotted to the Conservation Reserve Fund Established by the Voters in 2018 in accordance with 24 VSA 2804. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it, and the ayes do have it. And you have approved the half-cent increase to the tax rate to be allotted to the Conservation Reserve Fund. Here now, Article 6, Shall the Voters Accept a Fiscal Year 2024 Budget of Expenditures Not to Exceed $1,399,220, of which an estimated $964,448 shall be raised by taxes and authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the fiscal year 2024 budget of expenditures not to exceed $1,399,220, of which an estimated $964,448 shall be raised by taxes and authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same. Discussion on the motion?
Do we have a ballot vote?
Do you?
Yes. Kat?
Well, Morgan, it says not to exceed the $1,399,220. Does that include the half-cent we just approved the increase for the conservation?
That does not include the half-cent increase. The half-cent increase would be an increase to the municipal tax rate, which is set by the budget. So that, those funds are separate from the amount shown in Article 6.
I just wanted to ask some recommendations on some of these increases on page 17 in the report. At the top, on line 36, that's about a $30,000 increase.
Did you return to the line I did in the motion, please?
I did, 36.
Oh, 36, sorry.
The major drivers of the, line 36, Town Office Payroll, are COLA adjustments as it relates to staffing costs, cost of living adjustments as it relates to staffing costs, and salary increases.
Cost of living adjustment?
Cost of living, so COLA, cost of living. This last year, COLA set by the feds was about 9%. So increase in wages to match the increase of goods and services, cost of living increases.
Line 45?
Line 45, Highway Payroll. Again, the main driver there is increased in cost of living, so increased in salary and wages through COLA increases. We're also seeing increases in health insurance costs which are driving that.
I'm curious, but that number of 276,203 on page 27, bottom line, that's, puts it all town employees for the, that's over 176,100. What's the difference?
The difference there is health insurance costs. The numbers from The difference there is health insurance costs. The numbers reflected there do not reflect health insurance costs. Or VEMRs or the associated federal taxes.
Well, line twenty-seven, that's the total budget for the new book, I guess. Is that a hundred and fifty thousand?
Sorry, I can't hear. Hold on a second. What was the question?
A hundred and seventy-six thousand off the twenty-seven, that's the total budget of the paid up, those books, the twenty-two.
So that reflects wages, but it does not reflect the associated benefits such as healthcare, VEMRs, which is the retirement, the baked-in federal taxes that we pay. So that's the, that would be the wages, but it doesn't cover all the associated costs. And just to be clear, those numbers on page twenty-seven are last year's numbers.
Alyssa?
Line forty-eight. Just thought the big increase in the shoe repair, we've got a new truck.
Yeah, so our two older trucks are no longer under warranty, and so the increase there is to cover the associated repairs with those trucks, which unfortunately are expected.
That's anticipated, I take it?
Anticipated, yes.
And I guess one more. Got a new truck? Twenty-three. Infrastructure replacement.
Yeah. Twenty thousand dollars.
Yep, so infrastructure replacement is back up after a lapse from last year. The, as we needed the funds to cover the last payment on the two thousand eighteen truck, that is, oh, I'm sorry. So last year, we leveled funds. We did not fund that last year because we had to make a payment on the two thousand eighteen truck, and we wanted to keep the tax rate level. So this year, we are adding money back in, and we expect to draw funds off of that to support work on Black Falls Road, as well as Hill West Road, both of which are matching state grants. We also have a number of culvert replacements that we're going to be working on. So that's what the twenty thousand is going towards. We're also saving money in that account now for repaving South Richford Road. That's likely not going to happen until fiscal year twenty-five or later, but we're putting money in the piggy bank now for that.
Yeah, I guess finally, just back up to line forty-five, that's the total budget then, including wages and your benefits and all that sort of stuff for the highways?
That's correct.
And I think we have, still have, what, about fifty-four, fifty-five miles of total roads, more?
Total roads, including class four, class three and forty-eight.
That's more not over a hundred thousand dollars a mile. And I think, Mark, I think you're our fiscal, physical, fiscal responsible, fiscal conservative.
Yes.
But I would ask you to take a look at this down there at that garage. I think, I'm confident there are ways to save some money down there.
Well, the price of everything has gone up, fuel, repairs, and, you know, we looked over the budget quite a bit. We looked over the budget quite a bit, and, you know, we tried to cut wherever we could, but, you know, we're behind on, you know, culvert replacement and ditching, and now hopefully we've got a full crew now so we can get some of this stuff done. You know, truck repairs are a lot more expensive, and, you know, we, we're cutting as much as we can, but we've got to keep the road safe for people, too.
Well, for example, in Musson, instead of hauling out a lot of stones up on the road if it needs, if it needs taking care of the mud, they walk with a grader and roll over to the side. Last year, there was on West Elk, a lot of stones on that road, that heavy coarse rock, and still come up them with a grader and roll over the side. That's the most efficient, effective way to take care of that deep mud. It's just roll it over to the side of the road and then put back, so the hole will grab it. So it just makes one more. So that's one thing.
The problem with that, Merle, is you rolled it over, but then there was no bottom. So then we just kept getting deeper. Some of the problem is, we've got to get back to getting some ditching done. A lot of those spots, there wasn't too great of a ditch. And I believe the year before, when we did those repairs, to those, to the locations we did the year before, we didn't have any problems in those spots this last year. So I'm hoping that all the work we did last spring, we won't have so many problems this year. But it seems to be working for us, putting the stone in the bottom to make a base.
Well, I've lived up there four or three years, and I've seen what works and what doesn't. Anyway, thank you, Mark.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Merle.
Alyssa?
And so are the agency requests rolled into the main budget now? And then what is the process of deciding what agencies are chosen for that?
Yes. Yes, so the agency requests are all rolled into this budget. The body does have the ability to move to amend that budget number. So if there are agency requests or other line items in the budget that electorate wishes to amend, those can be amended, and it would then amend the article number.
Motion on the floor to accept the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget of expenditures not to exceed one million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Any other discussion on the motion? Perry?
I think we should ask, plus the increase of the, of the Conservation Commission.
So, no, because that's passed as an increase to the municipal tax rate, and the municipal tax rate is set based on this budget.
So then the figure of one million, whatever, isn't accurate, right?
No, the figure is still accurate because that is the municipal budget. This would be an increase to the tax rate that is set from the municipal budget for additional funds.
I'll make your work for it.
Troy, can you clarify that this is not conservation?
And at the request of Sue, I would just say that the clarification, this money does not go into the Conservation Commission's budget. This money is held in a reserve fund. The Conservation Commission advises the select board on how to use it.
Yes? Why were funds not allotted to the Hazens Notch Association and to the Montgomery Center for the Arts?
The Hazens Notch Association did not request any funds, and the Montgomery Center for the Arts withdrew their funding request.
Any other discussion on the motion? There is a request to do this by ballot. Are there seven people willing to raise their hand to support a ballot vote? Maybe we'll do this by ballot?
Can we tell? Can we get a count of that one more time?
Right, raise your hands high if you want this to be voted by ballot.
You don't need seven hands.
Why do we need seven hands?
To request a ballot vote. So at this point, we will attempt to do this by voice, not being seven voters supporting a ballot vote. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, we will move to vote. The motion on the floor is to accept the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget of expenditures not to exceed one million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, of which an estimated nine hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars shall be raised by taxes and authorize the select board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same.
Mr. Warner, every court, warrior, didn't announce. How many hands were on?
Five.
Okay, thank you. You need one more, Brett.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it. And the ayes do have it, and you have approved the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. Article seven. Article seven, to conduct any other business proper at said meeting. Perry?
Question, or, Charlie, do you want to?
Go ahead.
Oh, how would the Gable Road be renowned, the F R M? Does that go stay open, or is it really closed? Oh, this is the access issue?
The board did not take action to approve that request, so the road is, the public right of way there is open and will remain open unless action is taken in the future. But for now, there have been no changes to that road.
Perry?
The last few years has been rather difficult for those of us who believe in democracy and civil discourse. Yeah, really has. And I think we can do better in the future, but I put together a resolution that I hope we can agree on. Resolved by the voters of Montgomery at town meeting. One, the right and the left are both responsible for the tribalism that is dividing us into enemy camps and stopping nuanced discussion cold. Two, democracy is dependent on vigorous and free debate on all matters of public concern. Three, no one, especially not corporations and government agencies, have a monopoly on truth, and that truth is in quotation, quotation marks. The necessity for censorship is always urged in times of exigent circumstances. Five, the road to totalitarianism is paved with exigent circumstances. And six, finally, the truth is out there. It takes a little work to find reliable sources of information. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second?
The motion to adopt the resolution.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a non-binding resolution that reads, resolved by the voters of Montgomery at town meeting, the right and the left are both responsible for the tribalism that is dividing us into enemy camps and stopping nuanced discussion cold. Democracy is dependent on vigorous and free debate on all matters of public concern. No one, especially not corporations and government agencies, have a monopoly on truth. The necessity for censorship is always argued in times of exigent circumstances. The road to totalitarianism is paved with exigent circumstances. Truth is out there. It takes a little work to find reliable sources of information. Discussion on the motion? Are you ready for thy vote? So voted yeses to approve the resolution. Those who no is not to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it. And the ayes do have it. Thank you.
I'm curious if we could have some motions from the select board about subsequent public meetings. We would arrange to have audio ability for someone to do it, so anyone in the back, anybody that talks gets a mic, so we can all hear them. I think the whole quality of our discussion diminishes because of the fact that half the people can't hear what the other people are saying. This has been going on for several years. I hope they can be made a rigid part of public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, yes. I think that there are significant improvements to the sound system in this room that we'd like to make, and there's also significant improvements to the conference room, Public Service Building, we'd like to make, to make remote participation and participation in the room much more functional. We've tried to move in that direction with regular select board meetings so that folks can bi-weekly attend remotely, but there are certainly significant technological improvements that we'd like to make, so we'll keep working on that. But thank you for the reminder.
I'd like to just make, give people a reminder that there is ballot voting going on in the back of the room until seven tonight. Merle?
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to bring up also. In fact, it's, it's in the statute.
No one can hear what he's saying now, Karen, so.
Okay, I apologize. It's a pleasure. Thank you. That's why I was going to bring up, anyway. It's in the statute that you have to provide visual and audio for everybody available. If the people, not in the room in here, they have to be outside, you have to provide audio and video for those people. It's in the law. I'm only two years old, and I can, even with these things behind my ear, I can't make my ears off sometimes, and I notice, like Jim said, those people here can't hear. So next year, I know when I was born, we always had two microphones up here, and everybody either came up here and opened a microphone or took the microphone to us. Very simply, just provide a microphone where it lets them speak. Thank you.
Several years ago, we had the Montgomery Drive and had a wonderful discussion, discourse on the needs of the community. The resulting things that came out of it was, of course, the wave more during the sewer, and then there were tons of meetings on that, were public and committee meetings, et cetera, to get to the point where we're getting a sewer installed. Now, though, all of a sudden, we have a cell phone tower that's going up on the Milsh Farm with zero discussion. There's just notes abouting landlords on it that don't make any reference to the fact that it is 5G. When I went to look at the model numbers on the paperwork, it became apparent that it was 5G. The attorney for the Verizon who submitted for it, that it's given is 5G, but not sure what it is. In Europe, Belgium, the whole country has stopped installation of cell phone towers out of all of the potential health assets, and want more studies on it. And yet, here we are, we're about to have, with no discussion, a cell phone tower installed in town, directed to people in their homes, where they work. And I'm just wondering if the town has any possibility of any staying there so that there can be civil discourse on. I know, as an owner here, and I've worked within my side of this tower, that cell phones are a problem. It's been a problem forever. But I'm just wondering if there can be something, some discussion on it.
Just as a quick clarification, the installation of cell phone towers, communications infrastructure, that sort of thing, all runs through the Public Utility Commission, and while the town has notified decisions, we do not have a say, essentially. So you are correct that we were not involved in that discussion, but that was not at our, you know, choosing.
That's the states.
Yes, that's the Public Utility Commission.
So where is putting the tower?
My understanding is the tower is going to go on the silo back here.
Oh.
On the Milsh's silo.
Any other business proper?
We don't get cell phone lines.
You're right, this is the company. That's one of the reasons why this system is.
Vigilance?
I got it. That's one of the reasons that the, the system is, most of the people, you know, accept this because we need, we're engaged in it. There's a lath up for a lot of reasons, security, fire and rescue, even people coming into town. You know, I have the last phone booth that used to be in front of Sylvester's store down at my old home, and that's about all it was. And communications haven't increased much since then. So anyways, that's what is out. There is a system in place right now. It's offered with AT&T service or LTE, whatever, and Verizon. And Verizon has decided that finally, after a lot of prompting from a majority of people actually in this town, that it improved communications.
So are we going to get cell phone services on the mountain road?
You may, it, it, you may. It depends on your carrier, you know? I mean, it's, it's hard to, hard to really say. I know it's going to work in my house, but...
It doesn't help the mountain road.
No, but you have a better shot with this up mountain road than the other. And I have seen the radiation pattern or description pow, uh, pattern for AT&T that's currently in place. It's fairly good, but not reliable a hundred percent. And I'm not sure if this new system will be a hundred percent either, but, um, it'll be an improvement from what we had.
Get the mic. Yep.
Page eleven and twelve of the county report.
Did you do this for him? Sure, then he's on purpose.
All right, so, sorry. Page eleven and twelve was the county report. Talks about, uh, the wastewater and the street state project. So my question to you guys on the board up here, we had meetings months ago about the wastewater and you said you'd follow up, but then no emails, no follow up, no nothing. We asked questions about our private wells and stuff. What's going to go on with that? So that's a concern for me. And in the village, there's a farm or Kells and everything off their well. So we want to follow up on this stuff.
Yep.
And then the other thing, I was under the impression that the project for the sewer passed, but I was under the impression streets did not. But it looks like you're still going through with it. So what's up with that? Because a lot of people don't want it. It's going to destroy what front carriage that you have. You're going to create plowing problems. Vote for, while the state for one thing, they're probably going to kick it to the town. That will mean hiring more people on, on town resources, the plow to take care of stuff sticking out in the middle of the road up here and in the village. I don't think we need it. You know, this isn't a big city, this is a country. Keep it the way it was, you know, the way it is now. Let's presume that we have.
Where, where did you tell her, Francis?
Thank you. Um, so to the point of follow up with information, um, the projects have been discussed at every single select board meeting. Um, those meetings are available for anyone to attend or view in person or view remotely or view the recordings of. The information has been disseminated there. There have also been public meetings held specifically with outreach to folks that would be on the system. One of them was in this building right here that was also reported. So the board has attempted to get information out about the wastewater system project as we can. Um, we can always find ways to do better. Um, so I appreciate that, you know, if there's things we can do better, we will. Um, but we have tried to get information on that out as it's progressed. Regarding the street state project, um, the engineering firm that we've worked with has finished the revised preliminary designs, um, which are based on the survey work that people have seen. Um, those are going to be reviewed by the board in the coming weeks for comment and edit. Uh, we then have scheduled a butter meetings, so meetings with any of others that might be affected by the work to review and provide comment. And then we have full public meetings scheduled. So none of that work is finalized and set yet. Uh, we do have, uh, money from the Northern Borders Regional Commission to assist with part of the work. Should we move forward with it? We would have to get monies to support the other portion of the work, so that funding is not fully baked. Um, unless we can get the funding set in a way that can meet, you know, for the town approval, it won't move forward. And to the need, I would just say, I fully appreciate that we don't want to disturb, destroy or alter what the character that makes our community so great, but there are significant safety concerns um, around pedestrian, vehicular and bike safety. Um, just this week, we had another traffic accident on the corner down here. I think that house...
Brett's old house.
Brett's old house, um, was struck multiple times. When he owns it, this is the third time it's been struck by current owner. So if there are things that we can do in town to slow traffic, calm traffic, do you think there's things we could consider?
Yeah, but that truck, that car hit a rock. It didn't hit the house.
Uh, the last one that hit, the past week hit a tree. The prior strike did hit the house and punched a big hole in the foundation.
Merle? Merle, quick with the lights.
I would encourage everyone to attend select board meetings. You go to the McConner outside, go to the agendas, and every agenda has a link to join via Zoom. There's three people that attend select board meetings, that's Sue Wilson, Larry O'Ton, myself. Larry and Sue, I think, tend to all of them. I, I tend to Zoom quite often. And unless somebody has something personal to bring before the board, we have only three out of this over a thousand people in this town that want to attend select board meetings, see what they're doing, what's going on. Up at half of the year, you don't know what's going on at select board meetings. You all see yourself.
Any other business proper? Yes?
I don't need a microphone.
You need it or not?
No, I don't need it. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm Doug Hopeadsen, I'm the current chief of the Montgomery Fire Department. In late 2019, Billy Baker made it quite clear after several years that he wanted us to figure out what we're going to do because he wanted to step down. And him stepping down, he automatically becomes by our bylaws, an honorary chief for life. But in doing that in 2019, I swore that I was going to honor him for his years of service. And how many years did he serve? That was the big question. A lot, okay? But now, and come to find out, it's way over fifty years. This man has given his life to saving people, helping people in their worst day, their worst moment. In the middle of the night, doesn't matter, leaving dinner. You never know when it's going to come. It happens and you just have to run when the alarm goes up, the bell goes off. So people need help, there you go. So in honor of that man, in over fifty years, it's actually almost sixty years now because in nineteen sixty-five, he said he got married and he was already on the department den. I wasn't even born yet, you know? In honor of that man.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you. This was supposed to happen in 2020, but for obvious reasons it did not. Now they're all here again. After four years. Thank you. Yep.
Any other business process? There is a motion to adjourn on table, is there a second?
I just wanted to thank our highway department and everybody who helped operate this town, all volunteers in the town to keep the town operating and, and it takes a lot of hours and sometimes it's a thankless job, but we do it. Um, and thank everybody for coming out. And anytime you have, you know, any problems, just, you know, get a hold of the board and we'll, we'll help, help you as much as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you move a second?
Thank you. I am, I am new to Montgomery Center and I just wanted to thank everybody who serves on all the committees and the select board and everything that you do.
What's your name?
Uh, my name is Debbie J. And I want to thank everybody for that. Um, I hate to tell you, I moved here without doing all my research and I am a Republican and I know I'm greatly outdone, but I still appreciate everybody's, um, service and everything. So it's my first town meeting and it is great to see it in progress, so thank you.
When I first got to town, I was able to join the very first training session for the fire department in nineteen seventy-four. Bill was already there, Chief Puffer, Gaston, Dakota Brothers, a lot of guys. There were only about a dozen, maybe eighteen of us. Billy is one of the few left. I'd left after eighteen years. This is a young man's job. I'm amazed at his endurance. I encourage anyone who really wants to get involved with the town. The best thing you can, one of the best organizations in the world is the volunteer fire department. Please, if you're young, have energy, want to contribute, join your fire department. In nineteen ninety-five, when Chief Coda, who was a moderator at that point, decided at the last minute he didn't want to continue, said he wasn't going to run again. Billy turned around to me and said, "Do you think you can do this?" I said, "Yeah, I think I can." So he nominated me for the job and I did it for twenty-five years. Billy's done this for like sixty and it's a lot tougher. Moderator's one day a year. The fire department could be two o'clock in the morning in January.
If they're ready for the question, there is a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have adjourned, pending twenty-two thirty.